The December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular Ormond Beach City Commission meeting to order. I hope you felt welcomed as you came in tonight. Our deputy public works director, Kevin Gray, and utility managers, Bob Priest, served as greeters this evening. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, recording secretary, Ashley Clements. Next is city clerk, Susan Daughters. Then we have Zone One Commissioner Lori Tolland.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Zone Two Commissioner Travis Sargent.
Good evening, everyone.
To my left and your right is Zone Three Commissioner Susan Persis.
Good evening, welcome, everyone, and happy holidays.
Our deputy mayor and Zone Four Commissioner Harold Bryley is next.
Good evening, everyone, happy holidays.
Then City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley. I think City Attorney Randy Hayes is down there, yep. And then way off to the left is Police Chief Jesse Godfrey and Fire Chief Howard Bailey. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington, and at this time, if you would, please make sure your cell phones are silenced. We'll have the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, the invocation given by Pastor Mike Petrick from Harbor Baptist Church, and if you would, please rise for the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the order of business to come. We thank you, Lord, for this place to do it. Thank you for these servants that are here on behalf of the city. Father, we are grateful for each and every one of them, no matter what uniform they wear. God, we are blessed to know that they're here and they're for us. And God, I pray that you bless the proceedings, everything that's done tonight. I pray that be done in order and well, and Lord, give it glory to you, Father. Thank you for this Christmas season. It's a blessing to be a preacher. It's a blessing to be in this place even at this time. And, Lord, we are grateful for this season. We had the season's greetings here amongst us here today. We're grateful for the reason for that season, as we have Christ our Savior born as a celebration of this time. But God bless, please, and others as well, as all is done tonight. Lord, I pray for the exact wisdom that's necessary. I pray for the temperaments to be well. I pray for everything to be done in a way that is great and civil and understanding, Lord, seasoned with grace, certainly. In Jesus' name we pray all these things. Amen.
Amen. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got one proclamation to read before we get to audience remarks, and this is for the Wreaths Across America Organization. They're supposed to have a ceremony Saturday, but because of the winter storm that came through, we weren't able to hold that. They made the decision to cancel it, and I think that was appropriate based on the forecasts. But I did want to put this into the record. Whereas the Wreaths Across America Organization was formed in two thousand and seven as an extension of the Arlington Wreath Project of nineteen ninety-two, where wreaths were laid at the graves of fallen soldiers in the Arlington National Cemetery. And whereas the mission of the Wreaths Across America Organization is to remember the fallen, to honor those that serve and their families, and teach the next generation about the value of freedom. This mission is carried out by the coordination of wreath-laying ceremonies at Arlington National Cemetery in over three thousand seven hundred and two participating locations around the country in honor of the service and sacrifices made for our freedoms, with each name said out loud. And whereas each year, Wreaths Across America chooses a new theme to assist supporters in focusing their message and outreach in their own communities, the theme for two thousand and twenty-three is Serve and Succeed. Inspired by the need to continue to stress the importance of service and the positive way it can impact lives, Wreaths Across America plans to focus on the storylines of veterans and military families who have found success through their own service, while highlighting local volunteers across the country and the success that comes from our veteran community and the continued contributions of those who serve. And whereas across the country, Saturday, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, has been designated as the date for these ceremonies, the Captain James Orman Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution will lay wreaths at Hillside Cemetery in Ormond Beach as part of their service to the community. Now, therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, do hereby proclaim Saturday, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as National Wreaths Across America Day in the City of Ormond Beach, and encourage all residents to join in observing this solemn day and participating in this and other ceremonies to give tribute to our heroes. And so I know Donna Valerio and also Christina Moore from the National Daughters, they did lay the wreaths with their volunteers yesterday at one o'clock. I was not able to be there because of work obligations, but they had flags. I was supposed to lay a wreath for the United States Merchant Marine. They had flags for each of the branches, and then a U.S. flag as well. So wanted to congratulate the National Daughters and all their volunteers, particularly Donna and Christina, for their hard work, and thank them for what they do and never forgetting the service by programs like this. With that, we will move on to audience remarks. If you'll direct your remarks to me as the chairman, John Fawcett.
Order.
Yes, sir.
Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Again, my name is John Fawcett. I live at one ninety-eight Ocean Terrace, and I'm here to solicit your support to change the rules for these speed bumps, the voting system, and how it's computed. I think the town has made an error, okay? And that is reflected in the first time it was approved and it was installed. It's very important that they're installed and they're still there. But there's argument that the mathematics, and by the way, I was a schoolteacher for thirty-two years, twelve of which I taught math, so I can't understand from a mathematical point of view how this is determined. First, there was, I think, I just want to make sure I open this up. I wrote the statistics down. There was thirty-eight people solicited for to vote on whether to do it or not. Of those, twenty-three people responded, and that's where the glitch comes in right there. The town, if you go by what happened, twenty-three of the twenty-eight voted for it. Only five people voted against it. So I computed that out, that eighty-two percent of the people that responded were in favor of, and seventeen percent voted against it. So the criteria is sixty-five percent. The voting exceeded that. And then, out of left field, if you will, the ten people that didn't participate were counted as no's, and statistically, that's not possible. It's just not going to happen. Out of those ten people that did not show, it only takes two of them to agree with it, but didn't want to be involved. That's all it takes is two. And the seventeen percent is now given ten votes, which completely brings the eighty-two percent down to sixty percent, which is pretty close to two, yes, a quarter, three minutes. Well, I hope you will consider changing this process so it's a straight vote. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yep, appreciate that. Next is Frank Bullard. And then Gigi Galloway.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners and City Manager. Earlier today, I received a phone call from an individual that asked me to please come and read a message to y'all tonight. On behalf of Doug Thomas, who could not be here tonight with the unexpected passing of his wife Sally, Doug has asked me to share this with y'all tonight. This is addressed to each of you and all the citizens of Ormond Beach. We should be very thankful for our commissioners, mayor, attorney, city manager, and all the departments and employees for the dedication that are all involved to have exhibited relative to the past year with their transparencies. They have proven through all their actions, they are determined to keep the Fuel Farm from being located in Ormond Beach. We all should be extremely proud of the extent to which the city, the boards, our city attorney, city manager, and the staff, employees of the city have served all of us in regards to the possible development of Temoca Oaks Development. Never have I seen the level of cohesiveness when all the facts are laid out on the table between our community, our resources, our government leaders, that we all should be thankful for the gallant efforts by all. It is okay to disagree, but it is not okay to be hateful with personal attacks with our elected officials trying to help us all. It is my wish in the coming year that we all become more civil to each other and eliminate personal attacks on those who we may disagree with. I truly wish all of y'all a very Merry Christmas and a happy civil new year. I really wish I could be here tonight to read you this letter. Sincerely, I am Doug Thomas. So I think with the passing of his wife, the service will be tomorrow, but he really had planned to be here tonight just to tell y'all, thank you for what y'all are doing. This doesn't come from me. This comes from my dear friend Doug Thomas. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Gigi. Next is Connie Colby.
Good evening, Connie Colby, one oh eight Robo Lane, Ormond Beach, which you probably know by heart by now. I'm kind of following up on what he just said. Back in nineteen eighty-six, when some of you were probably still babies, we actually got off I ninety-five at the wrong exit thinking we were Daytona Beach, and fortunately, we ended up here, and we've been grateful for it ever since. Wasn't until two thousand and four, when Mr. Partington was running for mayor for the first time, that we actually moved here full-time. I know that we've been here saying, with our ups and downs, oftentimes agreeing and disagreeing, but I do want to thank you all for what you do. I see the packet of papers that you have to look at before you come to meetings every time, lots of back and forth from records that need to be understood before you can make a good vote. And thank you for what you've done for the Fuel Farm and what you continue to do up through next year, and have a nice Christmas and come back well-rested, because we'll be back again. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. And Robert Sunday? Saudi, I'm sorry.
Hi. We are Robert Nanny Swatty. We have a son named Lance who has Down Syndrome. Lance and his Special Olympics basketball team players often play basketball in our driveway. First of all, we want to thank each one of you for the time and attention you've given to us regarding the speed table issue on Ocean Terrace. We've reached out to you, and you've all listened and heard us. It is gratifying as a resident of Ormond Beach to know that people like you are assisting all of us with our needs and the betterment of our community. Now, our street on Ocean Terrace is in Zone One. It is a cut-through for speeders going from A one eight to Halifax and vice versa. We placed signs and cones up, but they got run over by these speeders who were driving extremely too fast, too fast to notice a ball rolling in the street, let alone our son, who was very unsafe. Over three years ago, we filed a petition signed by several participating neighbors sharing the same concern. A speed table test was done, and our street qualified for speed tables. The study showed the necessity for these speed tables. The next step was to have sixty-five percent of the neighborhood votes, which we got, then the speed tables were installed. We were told there was a discrepancy in our votes, though we don't believe such discrepancy exists. We'd like to address a more significant matter that affects all neighborhoods that are petitioning for speed tables. We've all learned that the non-votes are being counted as a no vote, and this is what skews the count. This is not a fair system. If the votes are going to be counted, why can't there be a yes vote? Most of us agree that the best solution is that a non-vote should not count for either side. If the person is not interested enough to vote, then they should be excluded. Only count the ballots that are submitted, not called in. Based on the outcome of the percentage of folks who did vote, this is fair to all concern and much easier for us to understand and accept, not just for the neighbors involved, but for those of you who have to make and explain the final decisions. So we want to make a request. In summary, we are requesting that there is a change in the voting procedures in which non-votes are not counted as a vote. Also, we would like both speed tables on our street would and should remain in place, and the actions to have them removed be canceled. So like our son, we can all remain safe on our street. We are all now accustomed to the speed tables, and we are all safe, and we would like to keep our peace in mind, and especially keep our son Lance safe. Thank you very much for your time, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. All right. Commission, we are now on the minutes from the City Commission meeting of December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. They've been sent to each of us for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, approval submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and we'll show them passing unanimously. The following items are community redevelopment items. The City Commission in Ormond Beach serves as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city and must review these items and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, we will recess the City Commission meeting and, at this time, call the CRA meeting to order. As chairman of the CRA, I'll open the public hearings and ask our secretary to read six A, please.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two fifteen, a resolution of the City Commission, also acting as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, accepting a bid from Vertigo Landscaping LLC to provide construction services for the City Hall Landscape Renovations Project, authorizing the execution of a contract and payment therefore, rejecting all other bids, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two fifteen, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards.
I move approval of resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two one five.
Second. All right. And so essentially, you're moving as a CRA member that we recommend to the commission approval of this item. Is that, that's my understanding? Okay. Moved by CRA member Persis, seconded by CRA member Bryley, I believe it was. Any discussion or questions for staff on this? Please call the vote. Yeah. I'm sorry, it's a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like sign, and we'll show that passing unanimously. Six B.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two seventeen, a resolution of the City Commission, also acting as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, authorizing the execution and issuance of a public art order approving of nine traffic signal and two streetlight cabinet wraps to be located along West and East Granada Boulevard in accordance with Chapter eighteen Public Arts Program in the downtown overlay district of the City of Ormond Beach Code of Ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two seventeen, read by title only.
Thank you. I do have a couple cards on this one. First is Becky Parker, followed by Julia Truilla.
I am here on behalf of Ormond Beach Main Street just to communicate our support of projects like these. I think the connection to our mission is obvious. It's very easy to make. We are in support of beautification of the district and improving aesthetics at the street level wherever possible. It's also related to the more difficult to define, which is quality of life, and what we call placemaking and creating a sense of place, a sense of belonging, a place where people want to be, and just being supportive of projects that create a sense of awe and wonder and just put a smile on people's faces. But yeah, so any projects like this, Ormond Main Street's going to probably get behind. I think this is a great starter for a public art project.
Thank you, Becky. And Julia Truilla, your mentor, if I dare say so, was looking at you, Becky, with pride as you were speaking.
I was. I was very much doing that. I'm here tonight. It's nice to see you all in my hat as the chairperson of the Ormond Beach Arts District. This is a project of the Arts District, and we've been working on it for several years with the help of the city and getting all our ducks in a row. And so when I was thinking about it, when I was sitting at home this evening, I wanted to make sure you understood the genesis of the project and the reason that these particular artists are before you in this project. Ormond has a great depth of artists and culture, but it's not always visible. Many, many artists make this their home, but we don't see them. There was a project that was done about five years ago by a videographer called The Artist's Next Door, and he came up with that idea because his son was dating the daughter of one of these artists when they were in high school, and they went over to their house, and they went to McConnell's house. Carleen McConnell is one of your artists, and he said, wow, you've got great stuff on your walls. Where did you get that? She said, I painted it. And, you know, you never know who that is next door, taking out the garbage. But we have fabulous artists working and living here. And so the nine artists that were chosen, we call them the Ormond Masters because they've all lived here more than twenty-five years, some of them as many as fifty years. They're all professional artists. Their work sells at auction and in private collections in the thousands of dollars, and they are all committed to their life here in Ormond Beach, not only with their residency, but they also participate in a lot of ways. Sang Roberson, who is one of the artists, was Citizen of the Year in two thousand and twenty-two, for instance. So I have their bios, I have their ages, and if you want to know more about these artists, I'm happy to share that with you, but I wanted you to understand what the genesis of the project was and how we got started and how, in these boxes, the life of the boxes is about three years. So in three years, we'll have a new set of artists, we'll have a different, perhaps, theme, or we'll have a contest, but the joy of doing these boxes is that they are temporary, so that they are continually renewing the life at the street level, because there's always something new to see. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julia. And Commission Planning Director Stevens Breaker is also available if you have questions. Yes, sir.
I just want to, first of all, congratulate you all for getting this done. I know you've been working on this for quite some time. I know DOT can sometimes be a stinker, because I know at first, all they wanted on the wraps, they wanted on traffic control cabinets were safety-based messages, but I also think that, you know, having something, you know, artistic in the downtown is fabulous. So I know at least half these artists, they're on your first group, and they're all great, so good work. Thank you.
And I just need a motion.
Can I make one comment?
Absolutely.
Mayor, I'd like to make one comment. Just wondering if this is something that maybe we can ask Jen, our information person, to start highlighting, maybe an artist. Every so often, a master artist of Ormond highlight in some of our social media or our website or something like that, just to give it a little bit more light as well.
That'd be great. Yeah, I love the term master artist. That's cool. Commissioner Persis.
I just want to thank Becky and Julia for bringing this to us. I think it's going to make our downtown just really shine with these wraps on these items. So I am just absolutely thrilled about it, and I can't wait to see it. So thank you so much.
Anyone else? I just need a motion recommending approval of six B to the City Commission.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, we'll show that passing unanimously. We'll close the public hearings and reconvene the City Commission meeting. We are on the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And does any commissioner wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items? I'll start with Commissioner Tolland.
So I'd like to just make a comment about seven A. I remember looking at, seeing the design and reading in my packet, and it was a little confusing to me, some of the alternate bids, et cetera, et cetera. And that's okay, but what I do remember is having this conversation that I would like to make sure that that landscape does reflect more native plants and more native trees and possibly ground cover that removes, doesn't use mulch and uses more of a native ground cover. And I couldn't see, I didn't have what we originally saw in what the bid is now, if there were any changes. So I don't know if that was my eyes in the packet not being able to see any changes, or, so I guess I'm approving it, but I would like that to be part of the record that we need to look at that tree and plant and that percentage, because this is, you know, this is something, obviously, I've been pushing for the last year. This is the perfect time for us as a city to show residents what they can do in their landscape using native plants. Obviously, not everything has to be native, but it needs to be a big concerted effort. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excited that we're getting new body cameras. I think that's very something our police officers need, but also like to, I was reading about these, I believe, when Sheriff Chitwood got new ones at the Sheriff's Department. They had the technology where if a law enforcement officer drew their weapon, whether it was the taser or their personal firearm, that the camera automatically turned on, and it also turned on any officer, I believe, in a sixty-foot radius. Just adds an extra layer of protection, I think. So I don't know if that's part of this technology. If it's not, I hope that we can add it to it. And that's all I have on that one. The FBO that we're adding out there, Mr. Bullard, I think that's a great project out at the airport. I do have questions on if we're going to get that survey back to us. I know we postponed the Holter Tanner, just about trimming the trees, what the update is on that. I think we need to just get some updates on that one to make sure the airport's as safe as possible, and that's all I have on the consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? If not, we'll go to public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and ask the clerk to read eight A.
Ordnance number two thousand twenty-three dash
Ordinance Number 2023-56. An ordinance amending Chapter 1 General Administration, Article 3, Definitions and Acronyms, Section 1-22, Definitions and Terms and Words, of Terms and Words. Amending Chapter 2 District and General Regulations, Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map, Section 2-02, Future Land Use Map Designations and Zoning Districts. Amending Chapter 2 District and General Regulations, Article 2, District Regulations, Section 2-07, Zoning District Designations. Repealing Chapter 2 District and General Regulations, Article 2, District Regulations, Section 2-33i-2, Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Amending Chapter 2 District and General Regulations, Article 4, Conditional and Special Exception Regulations, Section 2-57, Criteria for Review of Specific Conditional and Special Exception of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by repealing the i-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, removing certain definitions and conditions for conditional and special exception uses related to i-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 2023-56, read by title only.
Thank you. Susan, I don't have any cards.
I move approval of Ordinance Number 2023-56.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is a second reading. Any further discussion? Anyone need any questions for Stevens Breaker? If not, please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8B.
Ordinance Number 2023-57. An ordinance annexing three parcels of real property into the City of Ormond Beach. Said property located along Benton Street, Volusia County Parcel numbers 3136-01-34-0140, And annexing two unnamed right-of-ways, setting for zoning privileges and obligations regarding the property, redefining the territorial boundaries of the City of Ormond Beach to include the property, redesignating the boundaries of Zone 1 of the City of Ormond Beach to include the property, providing for transmission, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 2023-57, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, it's a second reading. I don't have any cards. Just need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of Ordinance Number 2023-57.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions for the Planning Director? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8C.
Ordinance Number 2023-58. An ordinance annexing two parcels of real property into the City of Ormond Beach. Said property located at 1113 North US Highway 1, Volusia County Parcel Number 4238-02-05-0040, and 1117 North US Highway 1, Volusia County Parcel Number 4238-02-05-0050. Setting for zoning privileges and obligations regarding the property, redefining the territorial boundaries of the City of Ormond Beach to include the property, redesignating the boundaries of Zone 1 of the City of Ormond Beach to include the property, providing for transmission, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 2023-58, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, I don't have any cards.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8D.
Resolution Number 2023-217. A resolution of the City Commission, also acting as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, authorizing the execution and issuance of a public art order approving of nine traffic signal and two streetlight cabinet wraps to be located along West and East Grenada Boulevard in accordance with Chapter 18 Public Arts Program in the Downtown Overly District of the City of Ormond Beach Code of Ordinances and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution Number 2023-217, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, this is a first reading. I don't have any additional cards.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion, comments? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will close the public hearings. Now we are at discussion and direction items. And we'll start with the City Attorney Evaluation, 9A. Commission, this is our first time kind of going through the evaluation process. We generally would start at Zone 1 and just go down the line with any comments anyone has to make. And I don't think there's any... I'm putting you on notice down there, Commissioner Talland.
She didn't vote for that.
Yep. There's really no required action from anything that I've seen. It's generally just a comment, period, on the evaluation. So we'll start with Commissioner Talland.
Of course you did. And of course, I didn't even really see that as something to discuss. But anyway, Mr. Hayes...
I'll give you a hint. If you want to do what I usually do is to rely on my written comments, because that's where I put most of my thought regarding the whole matter.
There you go. I don't even have my written comments.
Synopsis at the end.
There you go. Well, Mr. Hayes, I don't have to have written comments. You're a gem that we have in the city. You give us good guidance. You're there for us. You... And I'm very appreciative of your good work protecting our residents with all the issues that we've had in front of us and protecting us as commissioners as well. So thank you for guidance. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hayes, as I think everyone up here will probably say, you're the best of the best. Thank you. You protect the city. You have amazing leadership, your dedication to your work, and always being there to advise us properly is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Persis?
Yes. Randy, I'd just like to say, I'm going to kind of comment on the words that I wrote to you, but what I notice about you is that you display an honest and impartial management style. You demonstrate knowledge of legal principles, regulations, and ordinances. You maintain a positive relationship with the community groups and organizations we have. You have sound judgment, and you give honest and appropriate legal advice that is timely and forthright. The City of Ormond Beach is lucky to have you as our city attorney. Thank you for all you do for us.
Nicely said. Deputy Mayor Bryley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Randy, I think, as I said in my evaluation, I think you're a tremendous asset to our city. I've been very fortunate to have known you over 30 years and consider you a great friend. Randy is one of those folks that I've had the pleasure of serving with him, not only up here, but also as an advisory board member. And Randy is that guy that whenever you're on an advisory board or you're on the City Commission, and you start going down that road that you're not supposed to go down, he gets you right back on the road that you're supposed to be on. So you're always available for commission questions, always available for citizen questions. You take legalese and put it in the words that everyone can understand, and we certainly are, we're very lucky to have you as our city attorney, Randy.
Good deal. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And my comments, I indicated that Randy continues to function at a very high level in a world that's becoming increasingly combative and litigious, more so than I've seen in over two decades, serving the city. I see it in other areas of the legal arena as well, but Ormond Beach residents are very lucky to have Randy's years of experience and legal acumen in their corner. So Randy, with that, you had a very high score, almost near perfect, and what I would call a fantastic evaluation. So, Commissioner, if there's nothing else, I don't have any cards, of course. Is there a motion to accept, I guess, the evaluation?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, and we'll show that being accepted unanimously, and we'll go to 9B, which is the City Manager Evaluation. Similar with the City Manager's Evaluation, although this time we'll start with Zone 4 and work our way back.
Oh, shoot, now I'm ready. Just change it up a little.
Deputy Mayor Bryley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I said in my remarks, Joyce, it certainly, you continue to be, again, a tremendous asset to our city. She's always, she always makes herself available to our commission and our residents to answer questions, to address concerns, and she does that all in a timely manner, and it's really evident that you, Joyce, you truly care about this city, and we thank you so much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Commissioner Persis?
Yes. Joyce, I'm so proud of all you do for our city. You're an amazing woman and a wonderful role model to everybody. But I would just like to say that you're highly effective and a positive leader. You continually demonstrate knowledge of all aspects of municipal government. You anticipate the needs of our city, and you represent the city in a professional manner. We are fortunate to have you as our city manager. Please never leave us, and thank you for all you do. Please never leave us.
That's great. Thank you, Commissioner Persis. Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ormond Beach is fortunate to have Ms. Shanahan as our CEO of the city. She's a true leader with the highest degree of integrity, taking great pride in all she does. Her experience and ability to hire department leaders is invaluable to the operations of the city. I'm looking forward to working with Ms. Shanahan for as long as I'm able to serve the community as Zone 2 City Commissioner. Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Talland?
All right, I will read from my evaluation. Joyce, first of all, thank you for everything. I do appreciate having you as our leader of Ormond Beach, as our... What are you? Our mayor! God, it's been a long day. Anyway, Joyce, you always provide professional leadership in all arenas. I trust your integrity and your ability to handle all that comes our way, often providing welcome suggestions to be proactive. You never react impulsively. You have experience and background that provides sound leadership with problem solving and offer suggestions. You're a true public servant, and you have a servant's heart. Government organization is clearly designed by role and responsibilities, and you work well with others in various agencies, and you do not shy away from reaching out when Let's see, you have a very sound fiscal, financial background that keeps, I know for me, grounded when I have ideas that are up in the sky, and I do appreciate that. And you know how to utilize your staff, and you challenge your staff to be fiscally guardians while providing optimal service to the residents. I like the way you encourage open dialogue and inform the commission through your weekly emails and updates. It's very informative and appreciative. I enjoy working with you. You provide knowledge and experience that I require as I represent the residents of Ormond Beach. You are professional and caring, and we're very blessed to have your leadership.
Nicely said. My comments, Joyce, you continue to function and achieve at a very high level. I think I've said before, you're probably one of the top, if not the top, city managers in the southeast, if not the entire nation. Ormond Beach is lucky to have you. Your work ethic speaks for itself. You consistently contribute measurable, high-value work product to both our residents and the commission's goals and objectives. And you as well received an almost perfect score. I'm not sure, my score shows 50 points. Everybody else is at 55. It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't seem right to me. I could have missed something, but I thought somebody had asked me, and I told them that was supposed to be a five, but maybe it just never got recorded or corrected in the paperwork. So if you'll check that and get with me just to make sure, but I was almost positive. So, Commissioner, I don't have any cards on this one. Is there a motion to accept?
Mr. Mayor, I move we accept the valuation. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. And with that, we'll show those being accepted unanimously. Congratulations both to the city manager and the city attorney. Now we are at reports, suggestions, and requests, and we'll start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, Commissioner, I appreciate your very kind remarks. It's my distinct pleasure and honor to serve as your city manager, and I am eternally grateful for the dedicated staff that we have here in the City of Ormond Beach. And all of the employees care about what they do, and they like what they do, and they do a great job at what they do, and they never disappoint. You know, we all make mistakes here and there, but they recognize them, and we try to do what we can and move on. So thank you very much. A couple of things. Tonight, Mr. Mayor, I would defer to you and the commission. We did have a PowerPoint for the native plants. I didn't know if you all wanted to see that now and review that. It's five slides, that's all it is. And then I have a couple other things. I'm trying to tick some things off your list for tonight. Is that okay if Alex comes forward?
I think, yeah, as long as there's no mulch, I think we'll be good.
That'd be great. It's a pleasant surprise. Thank you.
Alex Schuman, City Engineer. Alex Schuman, City Engineer. So talking about our native plants and our landscaping ordinance, our landscape ordinance was established in 2004, as most municipalities in Florida were. And the main driver for it is the Florida Friendly Landscaping Initiative. It's the water-wise standards. So they promote both native and xeric, you know, drought-tolerant plants, which include native plants like the dune sunflower, but also drought-tolerant plants such as sea perslane. They can be decorative in nature, but again, the main focus is water-wise. Our landscape at Ormond City Hall includes a huge number of native plants, as well as the xeric plants, trying to blend in with the existing landscaping that's there, as well as promoting the native plants. But it's important to also balance both those native plants and xeric plants in the landscaping color palette and how those can go together. So the Florida Friendly Landscaping, they, the direct quote is, "They encourage the mix of native and non-native, depending on what plant is right for that particular location." The right plant at the right location is how our landscape architect and landscape architects in general try and balance those competing goals. So at City Hall, the current landscape ordinance requires 50% native. We tried to step up and go above and beyond that to 35 of the native trees and well more than 50% of the landscape material. So at City Hall, it's 96% native and xeric, with that last 4%, the decorative plants around the fountain and the sign-out front that are swapped out seasonally. But I think that's, if you have any questions, I'm happy to try and answer them.
Any questions?
It was a pleasant surprise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that my Christmas gift?
Yes, it is. Tonight, you heard a little bit about the traffic calming measures on ocean terrace. Tonight, you heard a little bit about the traffic calming measures on ocean terrace. You know, have we done everything perfectly there? Not, we have not. But in, in, in the effort to try to balance some of the mistakes that the city made, and, and you've also directed me to update our traffic calming manual, and we'll endeavor to do that, you know, this, the winter, probably by the, the end of the spring, we'll have something back to you to take a look at. We had a number of comments about the voting and how people, what counted as a no vote and what counted as a yes vote, so we're going to take a look at that. And so it's based on ocean terrace. The policy is meant to give us guidance on how to install those, those traffic calming measures. And so, given the totality of the circumstances, a number of people voted, and some that were for and some that were against, and as I explained to Ms. Andy Salvi, that my recommendation and my, it's a staff action decision, and my decision is to leave the speed table that's in front of, near their home, and then to take out the other speed table. Nothing would be done before the end of this calendar year, shortly after the first of the year. It would be, staff is going to remove that second speed table, because there were a significant number of votes that did not want that in the second voting. Now, we did have two votings. It's, you know, it's, it was an imperfect process, and I apologize for that, but I think that that's a best balance that we can achieve.
Commissioner, any comments on that? I just, let me just say, I support staff's decision on that. I know there's been some controversy in the neighborhood, but if you've ever met Lance, who's a young man, who's a special young man, if it makes him feel safe and, and protected in that neighborhood, at that location, I think that's probably the best compromise that you're going to find. And like the city manager pointed out, it's been an imperfect process, not that it's ever going to be perfect, but I think that's a reasonable resolution to the whole matter.
I agree with you, Mayor. I, I support staff and their decision with this, and I'm really glad that we're relooking at the process, because not only is this happening with ocean terrace, I can see in the future, there's going to be other roads that we'll have to talk about that. And I just ask that, before anything is changed, that you just notify the residents when changes will occur.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Sargent?
I had a few more things. I'm wearing out my welcome here tonight. The chief does inform me that the, our taser and our cameras will activate when the gun is drawn and when the taser is drawn. So it's the same, he says to me, it's the same technology as the sheriff. So, let's see. Want to remind you that on Friday, January 12th, to start the new year with the, you're going to start the new year 12 days late, but you're going to start the new year with the 34th Annual Starry, Starry Night Celebration at the Arts and Cultural in Ormond Beach with the gallery walk between the casemates and the Ormond Memorial Art Museum and the Historical Society in Ormond Main Street. All will be participating in that event. Please mark your calendars for Monday, January 15th, for the Martin Luther Prayer Breakfast at the Joe and E. Willie Daniels, L. Willie Daniels South Ormond, Ormond Neighborhood Center. This will be a dine and dash, again, like it was last year, where you can come in and visit with friends and neighbors before taking your breakfast to go. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the city manager? Thank you, Joyce. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
Good evening. I always enjoy this meeting specifically because of the evaluations of the city manager and city attorney, and I certainly share in your appreciation of them and hold them in very high professional regard. So I really appreciate all the time you take to recognize them, and I wish you all the happiest holidays.
Thank you. And city attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the evaluations and the comments. And I will echo the city manager's comments, and really, it's, you know, the evaluations are really a reflection of the cohesive direction from this commission and the fact that you've got an incredibly talented staff, including the city manager. I'm just privileged to work for you and for them. Thank you, and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Persis.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. I just had a few items that I would like to comment on. First of all, I want to say what a, we, we all attended the remembrance service for Officer Bakasa, and what a, I, I just was really absolutely, I, I'd never seen anything quite like it, and I thought it was exceptional. It was an exceptional and singular event that took place for this officer. And chief, and, and everybody that had something to do with it, and all of you, I think, sitting in this room, were there and had something to say or had something to do with it. I can't imagine how that family felt. They had to feel so loved and supported by all of you, and I think Officer Bakasa would have loved it and appreciated everything that you did for him. But it's something that I'll never forget that occurred. So I just want to tell you all that. That was just quite meaningful to me. I also want to tell Robert Carroll, your staff outdid themselves on that parade. It was just absolutely incredible. And there were layers of people on the sidewalks, layers and layers, and thank goodness that you had enough candy for us. It was really, you, we usually run out, but we did not run out this time. It was absolutely so much fun, and I think everybody really had a great time. It was a fabulous parade and perfect weather. Everything was just absolutely perfect. Thank you for all your hard work to bring that to our city, to our residents. It's just great. And I just want to wish everyone happy holidays, Happy New Year. Please be safe. 2024 is going to be a great year. I appreciate all of you for being here tonight, and Happy New Year again. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just piggyback on Commissioner Persis's comments regarding Officer Bakasa. That was just a beautiful ceremony. It made me very, very proud to be associated, not only with the city, but it made me very proud of our Ormond Beach Police Department. You all did just a fine job, and it was very touching, and I'm very honored that you all asked us to be a part of that. It was very, very nice. On to that, I was informed tonight, Mr. Mayor, by one of our residents, Claudia Mallow, that we apparently recently lost off, Sergeant Barry Biss, who's served on the city's police force for many, many years, and will continue, we'll, we'll keep the, the Biss family in our thoughts and our prayers. Robert, again, to piggyback on Commissioner Persis, y'all knocked it out of the park with the Christmas parade. Fantastic parade. I had two five-gallon buckets full of candy. I thought, how am I going to get through all this? And then I realized, oh, I got to throw it out. But y'all did a great job. We didn't run out of candy, and I was very fortunate to have a fantastic chauffeur and a, a pretty nice classic, you know, Plymouth Barracudas. That was very nice. And leading up to that, that was, that my chauffeur was Mr. Doug Thomas, and who's had a, a hard loss this, this past week. And there's something I like to read this evening, is a tribute to the Thomas family. There was a young couple, Thomas was their last name, in Ormond Beach, Florida, to us is where they came. This all happened in 1973, and as their family grew, the number of children they had was three. Their family grew with our city, and they were involved as could be to make it a better place for you and for me. Community involvement, the family definitely had the bug, especially a certain individual in our city. We know him as Doug. At times, we would have late meetings, and he, he would go home frustrated, but as soon as he hit the door, those feelings were elated. For as he'd been serving his city, he was always trying to rally. His support team was home, led by his beautiful Sally. And to his family, Doug, April, Douglas, and Tad, we are very grateful for you, and we are very, very sad. God bless the Thomas family, and rest in peace, Sally. Happy holidays, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Commissioner Tallent.
Thank you.
Wow, that was very touching, Harold. Just want to reiterate a couple things that, that Harold and Susan have talked about. The ceremony for Officer Bakasa was, was, was very meaningful, and it was a beautiful way to honor him, and I'm very grateful to our staff and police force for, for the way they honored him. I do want to shout out kudos to Leisure Services and Robert and Stefan. I, it was a beautiful, fun parade. I cannot believe my husband even enjoys this now, and I think he likes to just peg the kids with the candy, so I'm sorry if anybody got injured with that. The only request I have is that I need a larger flatbed truck, because my grandkids keep wanting to come. It's getting very tight. City's decorated beautiful as well. I love going down Main Street and seeing those lights. It's just, it, it just warms your heart to see that. Casements, oh my gosh, you couldn't be any prettier, and the festivities they've had is, has just been fabulous. And I also just want to send out my love and my sympathy to the Thomas family in the public forum. Doug knows I care about them very much. I, I love that family, and I just pray that they can find some peace and comfort during this very difficult time. And to all the residents and staff and commissioners, I wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, a very blessed and healthy New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner Tallent, Commissioner Sargent. That's it.
I have four things in January.
We'll wait. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I said earlier, the FBO out of the airport, I just would like to look at that a little bit. I think there's an FBO one, and there's different classes. The one is that it's supposed to provide facilities for pilots that fly in, and I just know that there's, I spoke to someone that flew in to the area, and they had a hard time finding it, and maybe it wasn't open, but just would like to look into that contract maybe and just see what's going on out there. The holiday parade, Robert, thank you for giving me three buckets. Sorry, Harold, but my son Everett, I think, threw most of it out. It was very good. And also to Brian Daly, he's the one that organized that parade. I mean, what an amazing job he does as a, as a citizen. Putting that on. Public Works, Sean Finley and staff, just, I can't say enough great things about them. Had a resident that had some issues on Saturday, and just the positive attitude of those employees that show up and fix it is amazing. Also to help me work through the speed table issue on Melrose and to get the signs up to help those residents feel comfortable and safe in, in that area is great. When we were talking about the master artist, Sang Robertson was my first job. As a little kid, I worked in her art studio, rode my bike over the Granada Bridge to sweep and working, rolling slabs of clay, and I worked for her all the way through high school. I think that's, and then also, I know we're redoing the flowers and landscaping in, at City Hall, but I also would like to look at eventually changing out those LED, or changing out the metal halide, halide lights to LED. It's just more energy efficient. You're not replacing bulbs all the time, and, and it's more pleasing looking. And with that, I'll say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you. Commissioner, and Commissioner, as usual, you've done a great job covering everything. The parade, I would say, from the comments I've received, was the best ever. It seems like we say that every, every year, but the crowd certainly seemed huge, really huge this year, and the floats were incredible. The weather was perfect, so it was a fantastic event. I had the opportunity Saturday night to present a proclamation on behalf of the city, the commission, city manager, and, and the entire city, to HOMAC, one of our great manufacturing businesses in town. It was their 60th anniversary here in Ormond Beach. They had their holiday party and 60-year celebration. Rick Hall, who is the manager out there, and then they had some regional managers and, and international managers fly in for that event. They're also the 2023 VMA Manufacturer of the Year, and just incredible people that work out there, keep that business going. They create products that keep our communities powered, primarily in the form of connectors for electricity substations and, and things like that. Most of the work, most of the things that they build right here in Ormond Beach are buried in the ground, connecting electrical wires, so nobody ever really sees them or understands what they do. But they've survived and thrived for 60 years. Every indication is that there will be high demand for what they make for, for many years to come, and so we're, we're very lucky in Ormond Beach to have them. And with that, I will wish everyone Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. And we are adjourned. Thank you all. This is it.